Call the meeting to order. We could have the roll call, Renata.
Thank you. Miller?
Here.
Edinger?
Evans?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Adams?
Here.
Okay, we will have the invocation by Pastor Chuck Wilks of the True North Church.
Thank you for inviting me to this gathering. My understanding of prayer is that God already knows what I have to say, and so I thought it would be important for us to hear what he has to say. And after praying about it for quite some time, I'm here to offer his blessing. In the name of the Creator of the universe, I bless you who are gathered today. To those who have offered themselves to serve the public good, may you know the grace of words gently spoken, may you know the wisdom of insights beyond your experiences, may you enjoy relationships of respect and mutual care. May you enjoy the blessings of faithful service to our community, may you embrace the journey and the challenges, may you care for those in need, and may you do what the Lord requires of you: to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly before your Maker. To those gathered to participate as citizens in this place today, may the words of your mouth and the meditation of your heart be pleasing to your Creator. May you speak with grace and truth in equal measure, and may you never mistake volume for virtue, intensity for integrity, preference for principle, and may you know the gratitude of your fellow citizens for your participation in this exercise of freedom. Do all know that grace is your portion, wisdom is your provision, and joy is your promise, and may the blessings of the Almighty be yours. Amen.
Woody, lead us in pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to start tonight's meeting by once again saying to Councilman Ron Enger to get well soon, and our best wishes out to both Ron and Nancy. I hope he's watching tonight. So we will go on to the amendments to the agenda. Any amendments to the agenda? None seen. We'll move on to the public comment portion, and we have three minutes for someone to come up and address the council on government business.
Hello, my name is Mason Patzer. I'm a graduating senior at Coeur d'Alene High School, and Mr. Greenwood asked me to come by here and kind of give you guys what my experiences were as a student representative for the Coeur d'Alene Parks Department over the past two years, and what I've kind of learned from that. And so, first of all, I wanted to thank the mayor and city council for allowing me to have this unique opportunity over the past two years to really explore what kind of government service is about, and kind of the volunteer side of that, and all the man-hours and, I guess, preparations put into making our city great, and I guess the groundwork from that. So, my experience has really opened my eyes in aspect of, I kind of got on to the Parks and Rec Department exactly when they were starting to build McEwen, and so it was really cute, cool to see the absolute development of that park, and it was amazing to see all of the difference of opinions and that kind of thing, and really be able to see it all kind of come together, and people kind of rally around it. And for the past, like, school at CHS and that kind of thing, I haven't heard anything negative. It's been extremely positive. And so, I really appreciate this unique opportunity and the unique place that Coeur d'Alene is to live. And it has also inspired me to do my senior project on public service with Mr. Greenwood. I job shadowed him, and it was a great experience to really see where the rubber hits the road in the aspect of, it's not just cutting lawns and trimming trees, there's a heck of a lot more that goes into it. And so, I was very appreciative of that, and has motivated me to give back to my community. And so, I thank you guys for that opportunity.
Great, thank you. I have a question for you, and others may as well. What is going to go on next year in your life?
I'll be moving on to the University of Idaho, where I'll pursue a bachelor's degree in business, and then on to the military, so hopefully fly airplanes in the Navy.
Wow, that's great.
Good work. So, Mason, how many years did you say you were involved as the student representative?
Almost two years.
Two years, so your full junior and senior year?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good work, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to give public comment at this time?
Is this working, by chance? Is this on to project?
Do you need it?
I do, visually if not.
I'm not sure that it's up and running right now.
Could we check it, just for the record?
Yeah, we've got the technicians available.
She has the control.
Steve.
I press the on button. Is there further instruction before we get started? It's just a short.
David, we can probably just, if you want to just go with the public comment, you know, you have three minutes for public comment.
Well, this is in, thank you, Mr. Mayor, David Barger, obviously, Mayor is too kind and gracious. It's 5:30 West Harrison. I'd point out that I would like to make note that I had asked Mr. Addison Adams, if not the board, to go ahead and get this fixed, considering the documentation might be beneficial for the rest of the audience. This is in line with, in conformance with 18 U.S. Code subsection 2382, misprison of treason. I think I had submitted that documentation. Woody's well aware of that presentation from last year. Mr. Kennedy isn't here presently to confirm, but nonetheless, I wanted to mention that the Daily Paul, and I surely hope that this gets fixed, because it will ultimately be part of a compliance issue for Americans with disabilities, considering the source. The Daily Paul 25853, or 8553, the Daily Paul bombshell, Rod Klaske's fourth administrative ruling, government offices are vacant, and unfortunately, all government officials are private contractors. We're lucky to have such quality contractors here in the area that we would have the luxury of the beauty of Coeur d'Alene and the opportunities it affords our young people. All the while, we might be affording ourselves greater risk as a society and a culture, as I'm sure Woody is well aware. I'd like to point out and make sure that everybody has an opportunity to review Union Calendar number 1078, House Report number 3123, 81st Congress, and that is the second session. You want to make sure to get your copy and study it very closely, sir, you of all. The National Lawyers Guild, the legal bulwark of the Communist Party, very important document from the Senate Subcommittee on Un-American Activities, and the dangerously corrosive, dangerously corrosive, if not criminal, element that exists within your judiciary, right here, Woody. And ultimately, by your age, you will be affected by it as well. Now, I've tried to mention this before, it didn't go too well, did it, Woody? You want to make sure that you get to the Senate Subcommittee on Un-American Activities and read it and study it well. You'll understand the risk if you get to the third page. Bless you, Mr. Mayor. Wonderful seeing you again. Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment tonight? Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move for passage of the consent calendar, including Resolution 14020, and, let's see, yep, and the following.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second? Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
McEvers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Move on to announcements. Anyone from council have announcements?
I have two things.
Okay, Kiki.
From the library, the Board of Trustees has approved kind of a neat program, that what they're going to do is, they're going to waive any of the back book fees that any youth have if those youth join the summer reading program. And they decided that it's so important to keep the kids involved in the library that they're willing to waive those fees. So, kids, if your folks don't happen to know about that overdue book now, is the Get Out of Jail Free Pass, bring it to the library, you don't have to pay the fine. And there's also some great programs you can enter to win prizes, and I even heard there was Kindle Fire and things like that being given away. So that's a new summer reading program. The other is from Vision 2030, and that's the community-based visioning project plan we've heard about. And they are having their end of the first phase of its celebration, and that's June 25th. It's on a Wednesday night, and it's going to be held down at the corner of Sixth and Sherman in conjunction with the Live After Five. So there'll be live music, and there'll be free popcorn and cupcakes, and there'll be some brief announcements, but it's their celebration for finishing the initial phase of the Vision 2030 planning. So the entire public is invited to that. Bring a lawn chair and enjoy the evening.
Okay, thank you. Kiki, Amy.
I wanted to give a quick thank you and show my appreciation to Charlie Miller and all of our community volunteers for last weekend's Coeur d'Alene Marathon and Half Marathon and 5K, actually, two weeks ago. Was it two weeks ago? Now I'm losing track of time. But I've participated in over 20 either triathlons, marathons, or half marathons throughout the last several years, and this is one of the, if not the, best organized and well-supported events that I've been a part of. So I want to make sure to give Charlie a huge round of applause and thank him for all of his work on this event.
And Amy, did you finish it in a, like, a personal best or record time?
Well, I don't have that good of news to share, but I crossed the finish line.
But you did finish, that is good news. Woody, you have something?
I have just a couple of things. My bride Shannon, my mother-in-law, passed away this last week, and we're going to miss her, and I just needed to kind of put it out there. Life goes on. Other thing, this is something that's, since last week, we, you know, we did that thing on the Troy job, and it had me pondering all week, and I was taking notes and thinking about some stuff. So I have some notes here, I just want to kind of go through them and see if there's any support on this side. I was thinking back the last 12 years, my 12 years I've been here, of all the many accomplishments, you know, Croc Center, GeoBond for public safety, a library where we're sitting, Public River Access, all the little parks and things through urban renewal, Government Way Project, that was a big deal, sewer expansion, Pearson's Field, Stormwater Utility, new water wells, Front Avenue rebuilding, of course, McEwen. And I give a lot of this, a lot of the credit on these things, we're the electeds, and you come to us and say, yeah, you should do that, and, but you guys do the work, the staff and stuff. I was also thinking back on all the people who have moved up in this particular city during my times. There was a guy named Bill that used to be the city administrator here, and while I was here, he left, and Wendy moved into being city administrator. John, who used to be the Streets Department, moved to deputy city administrator, and Tim moved up in his position. Susan, who used to be city clerk, about 30 years, and brought Renata up to par there. Doug from Parks, obviously has had Bill under his arm for quite a while, and Bill's kind of stepped up to that. And then Pam from HR, who was with us for 25 years or so, had been stewing on Melissa. And those particular people all came from within. Staff and employees all need leadership they can rely on, and I think we need to move forward with probably our most important position in our city, and that's city administrator. And I'm going to kind of pitch to Troy, and I know he doesn't know this is coming, so bear with me, I had to get it off my chest, okay? Troy's been involved in most, in all those accomplishments in the last 10 years. He not only works on the money side, but behind the scenes in planning and executing. Troy was instrumental in working with our employee groups and creating trust. When I first got elected, there was a lot of, you know, nobody trusted us, because we're electeds, you know, we don't know anything, so there was this weird feeling around here. When the economy tanked in 2009, that trust helped the city save money when the employees' groups opened their contracts to renegotiate, and we didn't have to lay off any, any folks from the city. Troy brings accountability, integrity, and confidence in, I think, the department heads. His leadership skills cross many borders. It always amazes me, this stuff. He can, he and I can sit down and talk restaurant, because he came from that, he understands my nickels and dimes things. His leadership skills cross many borders. He is engaging, he's honest, and always willing to take the time to explain, and you'll learn that, my fellow council people, as we go through budgets. And he can take and take this language, this just government language, and convert it into something that we understand, and it's helped me a lot to grasp what, how government works. You know, Troy will not always see eye to eye with the department heads. It's fun to watch them work, these guys. They come and they want something, and he really works them to make sure that there isn't another path or a better way to do it, but he won't try and run the departments. Troy has been the face of, in our community, with groups like the Chamber, he's on the Chamber Board, Rotary Club, Jobs Plus, and probably a bunch more, but those were just off the top of the head here. I think staff and employees need leadership that can, they can respect and rely on. I don't think it's in the best interest of our employees and our citizens to prolong the decision of city administrator. You never know what you'll get, and we've had some experiences with that. So what I've been hoping to do, Mayor, is to bring this up as a kind of a motion to let, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, let's move forward, bring it forward next week or next, our next meeting when Mr. Gookin's here, and maybe Ron would be here, and let's really look at, is that the same path that we kind of semi-agreed not to go on?
Well, you know, to be honest with you, it comes as a surprise, Woody, I wish we would have discussed it before, right now.
Well, it was just a spin, yeah.
Yeah, I wish it would have, but it's, it's something that we have talked about, we'll continue to talk about. If anyone at the council wants to weigh in on that, they're welcome to do that, but I think that we laid out a path of what we want to go with last week.
But we didn't have a motion on it. That's why I'm saying, let's bring it back and talk about it again.
We didn't need a motion on it.
We didn't?
No.
Okay.
No. But, you know, I'm open to other, other folks's opinion on that, if anybody else has anything, but we certainly can discuss it more. Like I said, Woody, I wish we would have discussed it before tonight's meeting, and we could have talked about it, but it's fine to talk about it here, too.
Okay.
Okay? Anybody have anything else?
I just have, I mean, if, if there's concerns on council, maybe it's worth opening discussion and talking about it, I don't know if, I don't know the procedure. Mike, you can step in here, maybe.
Well, you guys can always discuss things, I think it's when you're going to take action. And so, in this sense, or in the last meeting, that action probably falls under the administrator position of the mayor. The mayor's the chief executive officer, so by everybody kind of nodding their head and saying, yeah, let's go down that path, something of a decision, but certainly some approval for going that way. If you wanted to make it a formal action item, we could put it on an agenda, discussed, be a motion to go one way or the other. So what you've done now is kind of just give a consensus, yes, we support that. If you want to do something different, you guys are the boss, so.
So Woody, if you were going to make this a motion, what would the motion be?
Well, it was just to bring it, bring the discussion forward again, yeah, which I thought that's what we still had to do. When I read the minutes, the minutes didn't show us making any decision, but I didn't think about it being the mayor's, you know, whether we said yes or no, it still falls back on the mayor's decision.
And I might expand on that. Typically, the mayor would appoint a person to the position, and then, subject to being approved by city council. And so, it does fall under the mayor's responsibility as the chief personnel officer, chief administrative officer. But again, you guys can do pretty much anything that you, the majority of you decide you want to do.
Well, I think, Steve, what, what happened to me was, I don't think I was, I just didn't think much about it. We, you talked to me, it was coming, and it didn't dawn on to me till after this last couple of weeks, and I was thinking about, I didn't say anything, nothing. And so, this, I'm kind of behind it.
Well, you know, we certainly, we certainly can put it on the agenda. I think it's probably good to have a more full council to discuss it, but if we want to put it on the agenda for next time and talk about it, we certainly can do that. Is that, Steve?
Well, I guess, Woody, is it your suggestion, then, that we bypass the selection process and just appoint Troy? But the motion wouldn't be that tonight. The motion is just to move it forward.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's what was your intention.
Yeah, it's pretty much just after I looked at everything and took some notes and thought about the past, and I just went through it with EMS. We just went out and tried to find somebody, and it took us a long time, and two, two tries, and spent money, and unfortunately, there, we didn't have somebody from within. And I'm looking back on our history of the people who from within have climbed and been in leadership roles, and I'm looking at this guy going, it's almost like a no-brainer. And I know he can run for it and, and put up for it, and just, you know, we're waiting till October, and that just doesn't seem to be the best use of time and energy right at the moment, when hopefully they're looking for leadership, and, you know, he's going to carry it.
Well, Woody, I think we have used the city in the past, interims, and interims have been very successful to bridge the gap from the time that the original person was left to when, when another person was hired. I think that interim chief clerk has done a wonderful job in leading our police force during that time, so I think there's a history of having interims lead to the point of a final decision. We did discuss it last week. That would have been a time, if there was concern, to bring it up and talk about it. There wasn't any talk about it at that point, but like I said, I'm glad, I'm glad to bring it back up so everyone can talk about it.
Good question, Mr. Mayor. When it's, again, I'm still trying to fill out how this all works, and when it's a position having to do with staffing, what, where is the line drawn that it's, we, the discussion happens in executive session versus publicly? I mean, I just, I mean, I'm sensitive to Troy sitting here, and I feel like we're talking about him in front of the community, and...
Yeah, typically, you would take applications, discuss it in an executive session. Again, you can do it either way, but I think that's probably the way it would be done, especially when you get down to choosing between one or two, or two or three people, and discuss the merits there.
Okay.
However, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I asked for this to be on the agenda two weeks ago, so that was totally my comfort in working with you and for you and for this community to get that out there, so that we were speaking about what options the council had, your confidence in Timison. I'm comfortable with you speaking about that in public. This is a little unusual, two weeks later, but I was comfortable two weeks ago, so I'm willing to hear whatever you want to say about me.
Well, like I said, I think we need to put it, if it's, the council's wishes to put it on an agenda item and discuss it in two weeks, I'm certainly open to that, if we want to reopen that and talk about it again.
Well, let me just say about the two weeks, you know, you guys are kind of going, well, you know, you should have had your act together two weeks ago. Well, and that's true, and I didn't, and I apologize for that. In the past here, things have come and gone over and over and over again. McEwen had a horrible history of every council meeting, there was a battle over anything that moved on McEwen. So, you know, because something goes forward, but I didn't see a motion, and that's why I thought it would be appropriate to say these things and do these things now, and you guys can decide whether, if you just want to blow it off and stay with what the decision was.
Well, Woody, I think, I don't, I don't think, I don't think blow it off is an appropriate term.
I'm sorry, you're right.
I don't think anybody's here, is here to blow anything off.
Okay.
I mean, I think we take our job pretty serious.
We do, and I didn't mean it that way, it's just, if we want to stick with what we did two weeks ago, I have said my piece. I'm two weeks late, but I should have said this last week, and, two weeks ago, and I didn't, so I'm just going to make the motion, if we, if anybody else wants to second it, and bring it forward to next week, and we can go through this all over again on my behalf. So with that, I would like to make a motion to bring the appointment of city administrator to the next council meeting for consideration.
Mayor Woodmark?
Just some clarity, I think what we've interpreted your rights as elected officials is that you can put anything, any one of you can put anything on an agenda anytime you want to, and because I think there are, in the past, people have had things they wanted to talk about, and they want to get it on agenda. So in the past, I don't think we've required a motion to put anything, or a council member to put something on an agenda.
Well, but I don't, I don't want to be the lone one to say, let's bring it forward when it's already a done deal. That's my point of bringing up it as a motion. I'm about two weeks off this week.
Okay, so Mike, so is it appropriate for Woody to make that motion, and I guess approve it, which, it's not protocol, but would he would like to go through that, so I guess we could go through that exercise?
Yeah, and I just brought that up, because in the future, if somebody wants to come in and put something on the agenda, certainly to talk about it, I think in the past, we've said, that's your right to do that. You may have something that the rest of the council really doesn't care about, but you want to talk about it, and I think that's, you're elected, you represent people, and I think that's something that you have the right to do. I don't think, so Woody has made a motion, you can act on that, or you can just say, Woody, we'll put it on the agenda next time, however you want to do it.
What's your wishes? Woody, would you like us to put it on there? Would you like us to vote?
I would like to vote, get a second. If I can get a second, we go forward. If I don't, that's fine, too.
Okay, so there's a motion?
Can I be clear first? So that, where we left this is Troy being the interim, and you didn't have an opportunity to speak about the length of that or the appointment of that, and we're clear that the mayor can, is the one who appoints the administrator, and the council approves that appointment. So it's going to come back to council for approval regardless of whether this is discussed today or not. Is that, is that right?
Other than I did have a chance to speak, I just didn't.
Right.
A ditty.
Okay.
And it's my understanding, if I may, that you would like to open this up for further discussion. After thinking about it for the last two weeks, you have more thoughts that you'd like to add to this discussion that didn't materialize right in the moment, which, you know, many times those situations happen, I can understand that. So the motion is to open discussion.
Next, our next meeting, bring it, put it on the agenda.
Okay, so there's a motion?
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd met a few weeks back, and I'd asked you about this, and you'd expressed that it was your wishes to open up a selection process for a new administrator, and I had agreed with you on that, then it came to council, and as Woody indicated, nobody said...
Then it came to council, and as Woody indicated, nobody said anything about it. You presented that, and we all agreed. And I think it's the best route. I know that that's what Councilman Guken supports, is, he, he gave comments on that. Brown's not here, so we don't know what he thinks. So we're not sliding anybody. As Kiki had indicated, this is going to come to a vote once we've gone through that process. I personally, you know, I, all the, all the accolades you gave to Troy, I agree with. However, I think it's certainly a position that, as, as like the chief, is worthy of opening up and, and having, you know, a candidate selection process. And again, out of full respect for the mayor and, and that being his choice, so I won't, I won't support it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Renato, do we have a roll call vote on this unusual little vote, or how would you like to handle this?
It is at your pleasure.
Oh, go ahead and have a roll call.
But a roll call is probably easier.
Okay.
Okay. McEvers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
No.
Okay. Any other announcements from council? I wanted to, I always acknowledge state champions. I would like to acknowledge the Lake City High School lacrosse team for their state championship. Great job to the Lake City High School lacrosse team.
Yay.
I have an appointment of Tina Johnson to the Arts Commission. If we could get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to appoint Tina Johnson to the Arts Commission.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Move on to the administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and constituents of Coeur d'Alene. Exciting news. Thorco Field dedication is happening this week on Wednesday evening. Thorco Field is the former home, or has previously been replaced from the field that was right here at McEwen. So we will have some Coeur d'Alene American Legion baseball this Wednesday, June 4th, at 4:30. The single A team will be playing. And at 7:00 PM, there'll be an official ceremony, and we will bring many of you dignitaries there. And the double A team will be hosting their rivals after the official ceremony. So good luck to our Coeur d'Alene American Legion baseball team at their new home field, Thorco Field. Spring is upon us. The roads have now been washed after the thunderstorms we've had, and we will take advantage of the warmer weathers to put down some paint. Mayor and council, there will be 120 miles of center line painted this spring. There will be striping along many of those center lines. There will be 1,800 crosswalks done, and arrows that will be freshened up. Crews will spend the majority of the summer accomplishing this task. Watch out for them, watch for those cones, and please stay out of that paint for as long as we have those cones up so that we don't have any tracking. Congratulations to our own Assistant Water Superintendent Terry Pickle. He is a cross connection control specialist. He is teaching a class for a number of students right over in Spokane and has been awarded this teaching opportunity because of his knowledge. In our own public library, right here, we, we are inviting all the constituents to attend three reading slash discussion programs on the theme of Wilderness Considered, Wednesday the 4th of June, the 11th of June, and the 18th. The series was developed by the Idaho Humanities Council in commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the 1964 Wilderness Act. There's research and information here at the library, and those are the dates and times. Welcome to your Coeur d'Alene library. We are in the midst of softball season. Coeur d'Alene has phenomenal fields and lots of great athletes. Our recreation department has weekend tournaments scheduled all summer, except Iron Man Weekend. Over 175 girls' fast pitch teams and 100 adult teams will be visiting us this summer. So thanks to our recreation department for keeping those teams happy, and our parks department for keeping everything fluffed and buffed. Coeur d'Alene 2030, it is winding up its inaugural year, and they have received a generous grant to help create a vision and action plan for our community. The Inland Northwest Community Foundation has pledged up to $10,000 in matching funds. That means, as a community, we need to bring some money to get all $10,000. That is its website and an opportunity to donate. Our own city attorney, Mike Gridley, has been instrumental in getting us to the finish line. So we thank them for all of the work that has gone on, the great data that's been collected, and this opportunity to continue the process with some dollars. Specialized Needs Recreation is seeking volunteers ages 13 and up to help with Camp All-Stars. It's a summer day camp for children with special needs. The camp dates are listed in front of you. We appreciate volunteers. It obviously helps out greatly, and you do not have to volunteer every hour of every day. And in case you have any questions or comments, we have a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week line that our own mayor, Steve Widmire, has set up as he had promised he would do. So if you would like to call 769-2220, extension 503, leave a message, and we will follow up as staff through our mayor. That ends my report, Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Any questions for Troy? Thank you, Troy. Moving on to general services. I could do that. Okay, Steve?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Councilperson Evans and myself, aside from two other items, voted to move two other items forward to the agenda. First one being an approval of RFQ award to Welch Comer for the Four Corners BLM Master Plan and authorize staff to negotiate an agreement. We have Mr. Greenwood with us to give us the details.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as Councilman Adams talked about, our RFQ selection, the mayor, myself, Steve Anthony, Scott Cranston, and Dave Patscher sat on the review committee. And we had three firms, all local firms, that were interested in participating in this. It was a very close call, but at the end of the day, and we all tallied up our votes, we chose to recommend Welch Comer. And we're here this evening for you to make that approval and allow us to enter in negotiation with them to write the master plan for BLM and Four Corners.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we accept the approval of the RFQ with Welch Comer for the BLM Master Plan.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have one question. Bill, we got this budgeted somewhere?
Seventy-five percent of it will be coming from LCDC, and we are going to look for some other partners and ourselves for the other 25%.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, Steve?
Next, Mr. Mayor, we have, again, councilman, councilperson Evans and myself voted to move this forward to full council for a vote, approval of funding and authorization, staff to negotiate a lease agreement with East Lake LLC for an East Sherman Police Substation. And we have interim Chief Clark here to give us the details on that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And yes, we're proposing to have a substation in the south part of Coeur d'Alene. As you know, part of a strategic planning is to provide better police services in the south part of Coeur d'Alene. And part of that came up because, as you know, in 1999, we moved out of the downtown area. We moved south to 3818 Schreiber Way. And that pretty much created a disconnect with the downtown area. And in the time that has followed that, we've grown in, as a city, and also with our traffic, and it's pretty much created an issue in the sense of response times to the south part of Coeur d'Alene. Also, the dynamics of south part of Coeur d'Alene is that's obviously where our main attraction is with the lake, and also just the dynamics itself with Sherman Avenue. There's a lot of traffic, foot traffic especially. And also, there's become some recent services that are provided on Sherman Avenue that have lent itself to more activity as well as more foot traffic. Anyway, with all those considerations, we'd like to, and we've looked at in the past of, in our strategic plan, of somehow to address those concerns by having more of a presence downtown. And in, in light of that, we have, in looking at rental space and looking at how we can make this happen, we've found a location that, that would work. And we feel, instead of strategically planning later down the road, we feel, why not now? Since it's a good idea, now's a good time to try and do that now. And we feel we can do it now with current money that we have in our budget through salary savings. We can use that money in order to use the rental space and also develop the, the space for us to have a fully functional police department. And that would carry us until the next budget year, which is, at that time, we would just only have to worry about the rental costs of fiber, rent, utilities. But from this proposal, we should be able to do it with rental from now until October, and also with the salary savings. It's cost about $45,000 to develop the space, which is essentially security enhancements. It's also providing computers, desks, the infrastructure necessary in order to have a fully functional department, like I said. And we looked at several areas downtown, and this area that we currently are looking at, at corner 15th and Sherman, seems to be the best fit for what we want to accomplish, which is essentially a front, frontage on Sherman, a location in the southeast part of Coeur d'Alene, and also enough space for us to really have access to a police department for the citizens of Coeur d'Alene. So with all that, that's, I guess I'm looking for your approval to have that police substation, and we would begin immediately with, like I said, using salary savings.
Any questions for Chief Clark?
I just have one. So this looks pretty detailed, and I'm assuming here that the tenants who are still in the building are going to share this building? So they're, are?
Yeah, it's, it's an office building, so it has, there are several offices within this one building. And originally, we had looked at this building because it had some free office space. As it turned out, that office space really wasn't what we wanted. It didn't have the frontage of Sherman Avenue. It was in the back of the building. And so we asked them, is there any possibility we could have the frontage space? And in negotiating and talking with them, they said that might be a, an idea, a plan that they would be willing to meet. And in talking to the tenants, they've agreed to move out of that space, so vacate it, so we could go ahead and move into that space. And, and again, that just seems to be the best fit, because we'd have our own entrance, be right on the Sherman Avenue, and it's right in that location we're looking at having a presence.
And you have a nice budget for exterior, so it's going to be quite visual and obvious as to what it is when you drive by.
Yeah, the, yeah, as, in the detailed budget list, it, it details the signage that's going to accompany that. We have in mind a four-by-eight sign, which is fairly large, that's going to go right out in front. And also, there'll be a, a sign on the door itself. So it should be pretty well marked and known to everybody in that area.
Okay. Wait, I could, uh, Chief, so talk about staffing a little. Is, am I picturing this a place where people can go and report things? I picture what happens in the lobby in the big, the big office. Is that the same type of thing that you're going to be offering there?
Yes, the exact same thing, except we'll have more traffic. I can, I can tell you from experience, when we were here at City Hall, we had a lot more traffic coming in and out. Since we've moved up there, we've, have hardly any at all. And so we're going to staff it with existing personnel as best we can at this point. Right now, the goal is to have it open eight to five, Monday through Friday, and then we're also looking at directed patrol over the weekend, having our officers that are on duty go there as well as report takers. So that's, that's how we'll do it preliminary, see how it goes and see how it works. Essentially, we're looking at, again, existing manpower. We have 94 full-time employees, so we're looking at having some of them transferred down to this location so they can work out of that office and keep it a open office. And so they, like you said, they can't just walk in and get assistance from us. And also, we'll have it set up with the exterior. We're going to have a door there that will also have a communication, a means of communication, so they call and ask for an officer, ask for help, and we can get someone there right away.
Do, um, will this, you could go there for fingerprints? Would there be a detective there working on cases, that type of?
Right now, we're looking at just some of our personnel that can really handle calls that would come up, or likely come up on just routine citizens coming inside the door. So for instance, fingerprinting, we'll still be doing our main building. This is limited space. This is about 1,040 square feet. And so it's limited in that regard. The main thing we're looking at, just looking at immediate assistance to the citizens in that area for a response that need an officer or that might need some help regarding whatever the situation is, but not necessarily like getting reports or getting fingerprints or our detectives working there. It's mainly just our first-line officers, our report takers. Those people would be working in and out of the building.
So we're making a five-year commitment for this on the rent, right? So I mean, we are committing to five years.
Yeah, that's the proposal, is that we look at a five-year commitment. The reason is, is because the infrastructure costs that we're basically putting into the building, it would make more sense to go out five years. That way, the fiber's cheaper that way, and also just all in all, the cost to redo the building with the security enhancements. We got to change the doors, we got to add some walls, we got to obviously buy a lot of equipment that'll make it a fully functional department. So we felt five years was a minimum to at least make it the most economical.
I just know Troy hates leasing for any length of time. It's sort of a try, right? Five-year try?
That's what we felt. We felt it's, with the cost and the amount of money, it's a pretty reasonable, something that we can try and see how it works, and it seems like it'll work real well just because of the needs I talked about, our response times, our availability down there. Officers will be able to go in there and do reports and work on their reports, and if they do have a call, there'll be a quicker response to the south end of town. And that's what we're looking for, is better police services in the south part of town.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Clark? Okay, thank you. So we have a motion then to approve?
Second?
Oh, no, I can't make it. Looking for the motion.
Sorry. I'll make the motion. I thought it was already made. I'll make the motion to approve the funding and authorization of staff to negotiate a lease agreement with East Lake LLC and expenses for an East Sherman Police Substation. I just think it's such a good idea. I'm so excited about it. I just jumped ahead of the motion, so.
So you'd like to second then?
I do want to second this. Thank you for allowing me to.
So a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll move on to other business. Number one on our other business has been removed. That is no longer a piece of business that we're going to address. So we'll move on to item number two, resolution number 14-022, approval of an encroachment agreement with Stuart and Callie Cave for 801 East Young. And do we have a staff report on that? Mr. Gridley has a staff report for us.
Well, pinch hit for Mr. Wilson, who authored the staff report. Basically, I think you're familiar with the house, two-story house. I think it was built 1901. It's a 100-year-old house, sitting over here on the corner of Eighth and Young. And there's a young couple that have redone that, and I think have done quite a nice job. As far as we know, for 100 years, there's been an encroachment, which is the concrete, I guess it went down into their basement, a, into the, for a garage or, I don't think you'd get a modern car in there, maybe put the horse in there, I don't know. But it's been encroaching into our right-of-way for 100 years. They've been approved to build a deck on that, got a special use permit to do that. Now they just need to get a encroachment permit to make that deck that's sitting on the encroachment that's been there for 100 years legal. So it's kind of just a housekeeping thing that I think will allow them to do something that, they've done a nice job with that, that house.
Any questions for Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for passage of resolution 14022, approval of encroachment permit with Stuart and Callie Cave on 801 East Young Avenue.
Second. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? No discussion seen. Roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay. That is all of our business for tonight. Do we have an motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.